All right. Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Danvers Zoning Board of Appeals. We are now in session. I would ask that you turn off any cell phones or silence them so we're not interrupted. I'm gonna start by introducing our board members. Down to my right is Mr. Jeff Sauer. Our clerk tonight is Ken Scholz. To my left is Ken Javonan and Corrine Doherty down the end, and I am the Chair, John Bowner. Here from our Planning Department, our Planning Director is Mr. Brian Zakelli. Board members, we were in receipt of minutes dated...
10/26.
10/26, seven?
Yeah, 26.
16.
Somewhere.
10/16.
Twenty-eight? No, twenty-seven, right?
10/16.
Sixteen. Okay. Yeah, here it is, right in front of me. If there is no further discussion on those minutes, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
I will second.
I've got a motion as second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. I'll explain our procedure. Our clerk will read your notice publicly. Last, that you come to the microphone up here. We are on Danvers Cable. Please speak into the microphone, identify yourself and your address. Tell us what you'd like to do. At that point, we'll turn it back over to the board once you're done presenting. The board will ask questions of you. From there, we'll go out to the public for public comment, and once public comment closes, we'll come back and deliberate here, right in front of you in an open space. From there, we'll give you what your options are based on the will of the board and how the votes go. There's usually three options where we can either continue your case, we can take a vote, or if you're denied, it would be two years before you could reapply. So, and you can also withdraw, I'm sorry, without prejudice. So, with that said, we have quite a few cases on our docket tonight. We've got three continued cases, and Mr. Clerk, if we could start by reading through those.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first case is 98 Newberry Street, Highway Corridor Zone. Request for a finding from Section 3.10. B of the Danvers zoning bylaw to allow the expansion of an existing mobile home park to provide 35 new mobile homes on-site where 98 currently exists. The site is 7.09 acres and located in the Highway Corridor Zone. Request is made by Tamar Properties LLC, care of Nancy McCann Esquire, docket 23-5038.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Tamar Properties LLC, and we did submit a letter requesting a continuance until the November 13 ZBA meeting. However, I am aware now that we will not have a full board that evening, so I would like to request a continuance until your meeting of November 27, please.
Okay. Could I get a motion, please, to continue this to November 27?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue this case to November 27.
Could I get a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Clerk, moving later along.
Our next case is 4 Hanson Road. This is Zoned R2. Request for a variance under Table 2 of the Danvers zoning bylaw to allow the expansion of an existing single-family home into the right-side setback and to request a special permit from Section 9.2 to create an internal extended family living area larger than 750 square feet. Request is made by Justin Ladue, care of Michael Bean, docket 23-5039.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Michael Bean. I'd be the contractor on this project. We were here a couple weeks ago. We made the appropriate changes. We originally had two sets of stairway stairs. Both were outside. Now, we just have one set that's outside at the rear of the house. We have one entranceway in the breezeway. That's basically the main door for the home, and the laundry will be underneath those stairs.
Okay, so if I remember correctly, there was a set of stairs that were gonna encroach on the setback, so...
And that's correct.
You actually got rid of that encroachment?
Yes.
Okay, and now the stairs are internal?
Yes.
Okay, and they lead from the EFLR down into a laundry room in the breezeway?
Yes, that's correct.
I have that correct. And then, just to help me out, Mr. Bean, sort of recap. The laundry room will also be new? It's not currently one there in that breezeway?
There's nothing in the breezeway now, yes. So it'll be...
So the laundry room is part of the upgrade?
Part of the stairway, yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, and so the grandson will live upstairs, and the grandparents will stay in the main house.
Okay, and that was gonna be one of my questions. So who is gonna live upstairs?
The young boy will be making the trek up the stairs, Justin.
Okay, so, and how many people?
Just him.
Just one person?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, anything else you wanna present to us?
That's all I need to tell you, thank you.
Okay. Jeff, let's start, I'm there with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think I have any questions at the moment.
Thank you. Ken?
No questions. I think all my questions were answered.
And Jeff? I'm sorry, Ken.
Oh, me?
Yeah.
Was there, I thought I heard something about a stair lift. Was there a stair lift added or something? Well, that was one of the options, but it wasn't.
No, that's not, it's...
Oh, that's a different...
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have no questions.
Thank you. Corrine?
I just have, actually, two questions. So the stairs that lead from the EFLR downstairs are open stairs, correct?
Yes.
And the breezeway, you go up the stairs to the EFLR and then just off to the right? So in other words, it's kind of like an open space, and you're not really creating too distinct kind of units. It's all connected, correct?
Yes. The breezeway is basically the current front door of the house. The front door is to the hard left, and nobody really uses that.
Okay. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Corrine. And, Mr. Bean, I think I just wanna make sure I have it clear. So the square footage you were requesting originally was what?
Well, outside dimensions would make it 1,000 square feet. You deduct the wall space, and it's, you know, a little under 900.
Okay, and so has that space changed now that these stairs are added? It's still the same amount of square footage?
Yeah, it's really the same.
Because you understand why I'm asking, right? Because our bylaws, 750s, are one of the things we're considering as part of the special permit is to allow you to be larger than that, and so that is still the case?
That is still the case, yes.
Okay, and this other question is probably more for the owner, Mr. Ladue, but he indicated that there was, the mobile home on property was registered and insured. I just wanna know if there is now a license plate on that vehicle?
Not as yet.
If you're gonna speak, come up and be identified, please.
When Ladue, 4 Hanson Road. I have not put the plate on the vehicle. We don't use the vehicle anymore for traveling, so the plate is in the house, but it is registered and it is insured.
And I heard you at the first meeting, but I guess I'm just unclear on why you wouldn't put a license plate on it.
I don't use the trailer anymore, but I use it for insurance purposes. I have to have it registered.
Well, I would just think that this, not only to us who did a site visit...
Then, fine, I'll put a plate on it tomorrow. The plate will be there tomorrow.
Okay, well, that's what, I'm just wondering, because it looks unregistered when there's no plate.
No problem.
Okay. That answers my questions. Anything else on the board?
No.
I will go out to the public. We're here on 4 Hanson Road, seeking a special permit for an EFLR. Anybody wish to be heard on 4 Hanson Road? Nope, none. Okay. Jeff, we'll start with you, deliberations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm pleased that the applicant attempted to, you know, correct all the things we had issue with last time, and I will vote for this.
Thank you, Jeff, and Ken.
Yeah, thank you for the new plans. I'll vote for this.
And Ken Jay.
I'll vote for this, too.
Very good. Corrine?
I will also vote for this.
Yeah, Mr. Bean, I think this was a win. I mean, it probably not how you initially wanted to do it, but I think this alleviated the need for the setback as well, so...
Absolutely, yeah.
And then we've created a common space, and I think this will work out, too. So I, too, would vote for this, and if I could get a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant a variance under Table 2 of the Danvers zoning bylaw to allow the expansion of an existing single-family home into the right setback. I guess we don't need that anymore, do we?
No.
And to request a special permit from Section 9.2 to create an internal extended family living area larger than 750 square feet. Request made by Justin Ladue.
I've got a motion. Could I get a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Hope it works out.
Thank you.
Just to clarify really quickly, so that was a 5-0 for the special permit. The variance was not part of the motion?
No variance. Correct. No variance, just a special permit.
Thank you, sorry.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, we'll go on to our next continued case.
Our next case is 156 Hobart Street. This is Zoned R2. Request for a special permit from Section 9.2 to create a detached extended family living area larger than 750 square feet. Request is made by Tracy Hope Ross, docket 23-5040.
Hi there. I see you brought everyone tonight.
Yes.
Good, we're all participating in town government. This is great.
I'm teaching them young.
Welcome. Just for the record, identify yourself again.
I'm Tracy Hope Ross. I live at 156 Hobart.
Sure. I know we received updated plans, so maybe if you could just summarize the changes you made, and we can ask some questions.
Sure. So the apartment space is located on the second floor, and when we were here last time, one of the concerns was that my parents, who will be living there, will be elderly and will have a hard time walking up and down the stairs. So in that spirit, we have done a couple of things. We've reconfigured the way the space is laid out, and we proposed to put in a stair lift on the stairs so that they won't have to navigate walking up and down. They'll be able to use the stair lift to ride up and down. If I'm thinking that my parents are going to be elderly to the point where they'll need a stair lift, we may have to rethink the layout of the actual apartment for them as well. So if they need a wheelchair, if they need a walker, if they need a home health aide, we sort of took that into account. One of the concerns that everyone had last time was that it's a two-bedroom, which loans itself to rented apartments. So we removed one of the bedrooms. We expanded the space, the existing space, so that the bathroom is now larger and that one bedroom is now larger. The one bedroom now allows for space around a bed for wheelchairs and walkers, and the bathroom space now allows, it's now more ADA compliant, so it allows for a wheelchair, a roll-in ADA-compliant shower, ADA-compliant sinks, and a setup that's more conducive to my elderly parents living there. We also expanded the width of the hallway so that it would take into account ADA compliance for a wheelchair.
Great, well, this is all definitely, I think, enhancements...
Yes, yeah.
...to the layout. Anything else you wanna present to us?
I think that was everything. I think those are the big changes.
Okay. I'm gonna turn it over to the board for questions. Corrine, we'll start with you.
I like the changes that you made, and I just have one question. You state in your new information that the square footage is now 975, but is that because you've calculated it differently, or is that because the new layout is actually that, like a smaller square footage?
So when we calculated it before and presented it to you, we were calculating from the outside. So we took into account the square footage based on the outside of the building, and now we're taking into account the actual square footage inside the space.
So the new...
So it's a more accurate square footage count.
Okay, so the square footage is now 975?
Yes.
But you haven't changed...
We haven't changed...
...the square footage of the plan?
Correct.
You've just changed, you know, you've just changed the layout?
Yes.
And eliminated that room?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Corrine. Ken Jay?
I have no questions.
Okay.
Thanks. Mr. Scholz?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Jeff?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I think you pretty much... So I guess I'm just looking at the new drawing here. The second bedroom was that, I guess, in looking at this drawing, was the second bedroom like part of this living room area, or...
The second bedroom was...
Prior.
It was this first bedroom, and then the second bedroom was...
Okay, so they were cut in half?
Yeah.
Okay, and I take it that's like kind of a master bath behind it?
Yes, so that allows for wheelchair access in through the doorway. It allows ADA compliance requires a certain radius within the bathroom for a wheelchair to turn around and do a 360. So that allows for the wheelchair access, wheelchair access into the shower, which will be wide enough for a wheelchair, walker, home health aide, and it also takes into account the bench seating, which is necessary if they're having a hard time standing, and then an extra, an additional closet along the edge, because underneath the sink will have to be open to allow for the wheelchair and walkers to, you know, to...
Okay, and I see there's a set of stairs off the back, off the deck, that's one entrance, and then the center stairway, which I assume comes up from the garage?
Yes.
Or does that lead right out of the building?
That comes up through the garage.
Okay.
In the side of the garage.
So to access those set of stairs, you would go through the garage?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I think you've answered all my questions. No additional? I'll go out to the public. Anyone here to speak on 156 Hobart Street? Do we have a request for an EFLR, oversized EFLR? Hearing, seeing none, I will come back, and Corrine?
I just have one quick question before I vote.
Sure.
Which staircase would you put the lift on?
The inside.
The outer or the inside?
The inside.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Your thoughts?
You complied with everything that we, or you corrected all the issues that we had, so I would vote for this.
Thank you, Corrine. Ken?
I like the, all the ADA requirement, you know, changes you made to make it, you know, what do you call it, conducive to those requirements, even though you did not really have to do it. But I mean, that was excellent, so I mean, I would vote for this.
Thanks, Ken. Ken Scholz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't really like the fact that it's a detached EFLR. I know we talked about that before, but you did make a lot of great changes, which I'm happy for, and I'm happy helping out your folks, so I'll vote for this.
Thanks, Ken. And Jeff?
Yeah, I also am not happy with the fact that it's detached, but the applicant did what we asked them to do, and I will vote for this.
Thank you, Jeff. And, of course, never wishing anyone to ever need ADA compliance, but I think a lot of thought was put into this, and I know your mom was up there saying she doesn't need any of this...
She's not elderly.
...because she's good and healthy.
She's not elderly.
And that is great. We do understand that the special permit just runs with the current applicant, and if the home were ever to be sold, I believe they, I think if I'm not correct, I think I'm correct, they have 30 days to re-register, so you've certainly set it up not only for your own family, but for anyone to buy your property after you. So I would, too, vote for it, and if I could get a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant a special permit from Section 9.2 to create a detached extended family living area larger than 750 square feet, and that the municipal water and sewer system shall not become overloaded by the proposed use. The public street shall not become overloaded by the proposed use. The value of other land and buildings will not be depreciated by the proposed use. The specific site is an appropriate location for the use or structures. The use developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. There will not be an undue nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. An adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided to ensure the proper operation of the proposed use, structure, and condition. The proposed use or structure will be in harmony with the general purpose of the bylaw.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you so much.
Hope it works out well.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll now start with our regular cases that are on for this evening. Mr. Clerk, if you could please read.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next case is 144 High Street. This is Zoned R1. Request a modification to a finding granted under Section 3.11. B. 1 of the Danvers zoning bylaw to allow the extension of an existing non-conforming structure through the addition of living space and a deck without expanding the footprint. Additionally, the applicant is requesting to modify a previous special permit decision that was issued in 1989, docket CC-2280, to allow for a... that was issued in 1989, Dock at CC-2280, to allow for exterior changes to be made to the structure consistent with the finding modification requested above. Requested made by Michael and Ellen Fennell, Dock at 23-5035.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I know you were here not too long ago.
Yes. My name is John Fennell. I am here representing my parents, Mike and Ellen, who own the property at 144 High Street. As you said, we were here a little over a month ago where we gained approvals for these two items, but unfortunately, after the meeting, we uncovered a couple of things that we wanted to address, necessitated a redesign of the project, and after consulting with the board, it was determined that we needed to come back. We're here for the same two things. Realistically, the project hasn't changed much. It's just the two items that are different now is we're hoping to redo the stair from the second to third floor, and that required a dormer off the front that the previous approval wouldn't have given us enough space for.
So, we have a new dormer in the front?
A new dormer on the front.
Yep.
And there's an existing gambrel at the back that's in disrepair. It's gonna need to be taken off anyway, and we're hoping to replace it with a gable. Simpler construction and gain a little more space up there, but everything is still, you know, either staying at the existing footprint, if not going within that.
So, a new dormer in the front?
Yep.
And we're doing a gambrel on the back?
Correct. I'm sorry, a gable on the back to replace the existing gambrel.
Okay, and that existing gambrel and that gable are different in size, slightly.
Slightly different in size, yes.
So, otherwise, you wouldn't be before us, and I think I spoke with our planning director about this, and the feeling was because these are significant enough changes that we should at least allow the board to hear the changes.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else you want to present to us?
I don't know if you want to run through the slides. I can kind of just-
I think we'll open it up for questions, so maybe we don't-
Sure.
Have to bog down this whole evening with it, because I think we, it was just about a month ago.
Yes.
I know, I remember. I don't know, I can't speak for the rest of these people up here, but-
Yeah.
No, I remember.
Jeff, we'll start with you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I see all these plans you've submitted for the new elevations. The bigger dormer in the front and the gable at the back is no higher than the existing ridgeline of the structure as it sits now, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so that looks fine. So, I guess I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm looking at the dormer. Dormer's my only question. So, it's just going from these two windows, basically, to what's pictured here? Yeah. Okay, I don't have any other questions.
Get this to that.
To that. I don't have any other questions.
Okay, thank you. Ken J.
I have no questions.
Corinne?
Jeff asked my questions about the height, so I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, and this was just due to the fact that you started opening things up and found the state of these things to be in-
Right.
Not solid enough, I guess.
Correct, yes.
Okay. And that's really the only reason?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I'll go out to the public on this. This is for 144 High Street. And there are no questions, so I will come back. Jeff, I started with you. Comments?
I will vote for this, what looks like just a kind of a slight modification.
Ken?
Yeah, I will vote for this. Like we said, the House obviously needs a little attention, and this is gonna look really good. I'll vote for this.
Very good. Ken J.
I'll vote for this, too.
Corinne?
Yes, I will vote for this as well.
Yeah, I see these changes minor enough, and I think I had a feeling they were. And I think this is a simple enough change to allow you to get moving forward on the rest of this project. So, I too would vote in favor, and if I could get a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to modify a previously issued special permit, Dock at CC-2280, to modify Condition 1, there shall be no exterior changes to the building, and that the municipal water and sewer systems shall not become overloaded by the proposed use. The public street shall not become overloaded by the proposed use. The value of other land and buildings will not be depreciated by the proposed use. A specific site is an appropriate location for the use or structure. The use developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood, and there will not be an undue nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles, pedestrians, and adequate appropriate facilities will be provided to ensure the proper operation of the proposed use, structure, and condition. The proposed use and structure will be in harmony with the general purpose of this bylaw.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. You're all set.
We have to do the finding, too.
Thank you very much.
Oh, sorry, no, we have a motion for a finding.
Yeah, we have to do a finding vote, too, correct?
Mr. Chairman, I also propose to issue a finding under Section 3.11.1 to extend an existing non-conforming structure that is non-compliant with respect to side and front setbacks. The extension or enlargement is appropriate in scale and mass for the neighborhood.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Now you got it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck.
Okay, buzzing right along here.
Buzzing right along. Our next case is 6 Washington Street, Zoned R2. Request for a finding under Section 3.10 and 3.11 of the Danvers zoning bylaw to allow a conforming addition to the rear of an existing non-conforming structure that will include a two-car garage with living space above. The lot is non-conforming due to the lack of frontage, and the request is made by Danielle Funicaro, Dock at 23-5045. I hope I said your name right.
It's close enough. It's Funicaro. It's fine. I'm used to it.
For the record, go ahead. Identify yourself. We'll get it right that way.
My name is Danielle Funicaro. I am the homeowner at 6 Washington Street.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. And essentially, I have two children. We are very big into sports and outdoor activities. We don't have really any storage space since the house is so old. It's originally from 1860. The basement is not really livable. It can fit stuff, but just not enough for what we need. So, the garage is gonna account for much-needed storage space. Additionally, we only have one bathroom on the second floor, so within this addition, there will be a breezeway. So, the front door to where the existing porch is now will be pushed over into the breezeway. There will also be a bathroom and a laundry room, so the laundry will come up from the basement, so I don't have to keep going down those terrible awful stairs from 1860. And there will be a master suite with a bathroom above the garage.
Okay. Is that about the size of it? Anything else you want to present to us?
I don't think so.
Okay. Corinne, I'll turn it over to you for questions.
I like the plans as they are drawn. Do you know how long the construction is anticipated to last?
We do not know. No. We wanted to get approval first before we actively sought to make sure that the design that was created by the architect would be suitable.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Corinne. Ken J.
Is this a protected antique house? Was there a placate on your-
So, there isn't. Unfortunately, when we bought it, it had already gone through some slight renovations, and so the prior homeowners were told because they had made an expansion on the house that the original structure of the house had changed a little bit, so they couldn't have the little plaque on it.
Okay. I thought I saw one on it when I went by there.
Did you go to Washington Street Extension by any chance?
I thought I was there. I mean, it-
It's, yeah, our house is the Brown House. It's the first one on the left coming up from Holton Street.
Okay.
But the way that the streets are mislabeled, if you were to continue straight, you would be on Washington Street Extension. The White House does have-
Okay.
The plaque. But, yeah, unfortunately, ours doesn't qualify for it because I think they expanded it out beyond what the original Cape Colonial shape was.
Okay, so you're clear with that anyway? All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Ken Scholz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, no setback either side or front of the new addition is under 19 feet, correct?
Correct.
No other questions?
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Zakelli, the only reason she's here is because the original house is non-conforming?
Well, it's because the front property line is 30 is required, so she's still, she's not any more non-conforming, but the addition will still be non-conforming, so there-
It's less non-conforming than what's there already.
Correct.
Okay.
But still not, but still not, if they made a completely conforming addition, it would just be a building permit. But because it's still non-conforming now, because it's still non-conforming with the addition, it's a finding.
Okay. But they could move it back 30 feet and still be connected to the original house, so...
Yeah, it just wouldn't give them the probably the necessary space that they would need for the garage, plus, yeah, forget even the space above. That probably wouldn't give the width for a garage.
Thank you. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Funicaro, before I ask you, I'm gonna go out to the planning director as well. This house is over 100 years old. Is this not required to go in front of the preservation board?
Well, as far as I'm, I mean, the only power that they have, as far as I'm concerned, is if there's a demolition, I could-
Okay, so this modification doesn't require-
They're not demolishing the house.
Okay.
It's, yeah, it's only, yeah. As far as, as far as it is not-
This is the board she sits on.
See, that's our problem, because demolition, the definition can be, you know, you take out a nail.
Yeah.
And I don't know. Usually, the building inspector would have flagged this if he thought it needed to go to preservation, and he's pretty good about that. So, I'm assuming if he didn't flag it, that it probably does not.
So, yeah, his staff, staff's the preservation commission, and, but I don't, yeah, I don't know the answer. Is this short?
And it's not a historical building anyways, which she said they made changes and made it non-historical.
Well, hold on, hold on. It doesn't have to be historical. It just has to be over 100 years old. And then that's what kicks that commission to have to review it, but as you've indicated, only if it's being demolished.
As far as I understand, yes.
Yeah, okay. Does that make sense?
If I may, it's, there's no change made to the existing dwelling. It's just being added on. So, the outside wall over is where the addition will be taking place. I don't know if that matters.
Okay. All right, I think I'm clear on that. Can you tell me what the square footage of this is going to be?
I apologize, I don't know that. We had, we just had the architect draw up a plan.
And do you know what the square footage is of your existing house?
It's just over 1,400. I think it's 1,402.
And I know Jeff's really good at math down there, so before I'm done talking, he's probably gonna be able to tell me what the proposed addition is. My last question is, so currently, is there a curb cut? I'm guessing no, or is there a driveway on that side of the property currently?
There is.
So, you're not proposing any change to the town curb cut? You're gonna stay with what's already there?
I, yes, I do believe that because of the incline, it might have to be pushed a little bit, but the driveway itself will stay the same.
Define pushed a little bit.
The driveway will be, it will be a little bit wider than what it currently is.
Okay, so that will require you to go to DPW for that piece of it. I'm not sure if you're aware of that.
No, I'm not. But thank you.
But to change any curb cut?
Okay.
I will call you.
It would be a street opening permit and-
That would be part of the permitting process?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, just so you're aware.
Okay, thank you.
What did you come up with there?
About 850 square feet on each floor.
How's that? He gave you that for free?
Roughly.
That's great.
Okay, so we're going from 1,400 to about 3,000. You're gonna have like-
Oh, okay.
You're gonna have room to play hockey inside that house.
You know what? We need that because we all play hockey. So, it's, we got, we got about six hockey bags outside on my front porch. It looks like a sporting goods store right now, so...
All right. Any additional questions out of the board? Mr. Clerk, if you could please read that letter in. We have a letter of support from, it looks like, multiple neighbors. Just read those addresses.
Danvers Board of Appeals, we support the owner of 6 Washington Street in their request to build an addition with this dock at 23-5045, from the managing partners of Crane Brook Crossing, which is 5, 6, 7, and 9 Dyer Court in Danvers.
Very good. All right, I will go out to the public on this. Anybody here for 6 Washington Street? Hearing none, we'll come back to the board, and we will start with you, Corinne.
I will vote for this.
Ken J.
I will vote for this, too.
And Mr. Scholz?
I will vote for this.
Jeff?
I will vote for this.
And I, too, I see this, it's good that you're able to stay in the house. Seems like a quaint little neighborhood there. And, yeah, if I could get a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to issue a finding under Section 3.10 and 3.11 of the Danvers zoning bylaw to allow an addition to the side of an existing non-conforming structure that will include a two-car garage with living space above, and that the extension or enlargement is appropriate in scale and mass for the neighborhood.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
How are you doing down there?
Very good.
All right, Mr. Clerk.
Our next case is 469 to 471 Maple Street, Highway Corridor Zoned. Request for a finding under Section 3.10(c) and 3.10(b)(2), and a variance under Table 3 of the Danvers zoning bylaw to allow the removal of an existing non-conforming three-family dwelling and the construction of a new multifamily structure containing 15 residential units. Proposed structure will be closer to the side and near rear property lines than permitted by right. by right, request is made by Nancy McCann, docket twenty-three dash five zero four six.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you very much, my name is Nancy McCann, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and with me tonight is Jay Martel, also with the applicant LLC, also with me tonight is Bob Griffin, who is the project engineer, and John Seeger, the project architect, and we are requesting approval relative to the properties located at four sixty-nine and four seventy-one Maple Street, this is in the highway corridor zoning district, and this is a project requesting approval for the expansion of the existing nonconforming use that's located on the property, as well as some dimensional variances that go along with that request. The applicant, four sixty-nine Maple Street LLC, acquired this property earlier this year, and since that time, has been working with its design consultants, as well as in consultation with town planning staff, in order to create a design plan for the redevelopment of this property that will allow an expansion of the existing residential use, as well as some community benefit by providing public parking spaces for the soon-to-becoming rail trail expansion project that will, that will occur abutting this particular property. We are seeking, again, the finding, as well as several dimensional variances. The existing property at four sixty-nine Maple Street has a three-family home on the property that was built about nineteen hundred, it is not in good condition at all, and is in fact a nonconforming use. The property is located in the highway corridor zoning district, that makes the existing three-family residential use a nonconforming use. In July of this year, the preservation commission reviewed this proposal as far as the removal of the existing nineteen hundred structure, and found that the property, that the structure is not historically significant, so that we may proceed forward with demolition of the existing structure. The existing structure at four sixty-nine Maple Street is also nonconforming as to setback. The current house is located about one and a half feet from the front lot line, the proposal that you'll see this evening decreases significantly that nonconformity, so the existing house at four sixty-nine Maple Street is both nonconforming as to use, as well as nonconforming dimensionally as to front setback. The property located at four seventy-one Maple Street is a triangle, it is small, and it is vacant. In September, the planning board endorsed an approval-not-required plan that allows the combination of four sixty-nine and four seventy-one Maple Street resulting in a lot that is irregularly shaped, because it remains a perfect triangle with about three hundred and ninety-five feet of frontage on Maple Street, and twenty-three thousand five hundred square feet roughly of lot area. As you know, the highway corridor zoning district has a minimum lot area of one acre, so this lot, the combination of the two are still about half the size of the required area in the highway corridor zone for commercial use. I'm going to give an overview of the, of the proposal, and then the project architect and the project engineer will go into more detail, but the proposal is to remove the old three-family and construct a new multifamily structure on the property that will have fifteen dwelling units. The fifteen dwelling units will consist of eleven two-bedroom units and four one-bedroom units. This is certainly an appropriate location for this type of structure, even though it is located in the highway corridor zone, given the proximity to commuter, commuter routes, Route sixty-two, Route one, Route ninety-five are all very close by to the property. It's also adjacent to healthcare facility, a large healthcare facility, this will provide housing for, for employees who might work there, it also provides the healthcare services for the residents who will be living on the property, we have restaurant, gas station, office buildings, doggy daycare even, located in close proximity to the property, so it's a mixed-use area, and those uses that are there will certainly be complementary to the proposed residential uses. We're seeking a finding to expand the existing nonconforming use, the existing nonconforming use is a three-family residential use, we are proposing to expand that to fifteen multifamily residential units, as well as dimensional zoning variances are being sought for the front setback, as I first indicated, we are decreasing the nonconformity, going from one and a half feet to a little over seven feet on the front setback, we also need dimensional variances from the side and the rear setback. If you remember, the setbacks are designed, under the zoning bylaw, at twenty-five feet for front, side, and rear setback, those are designed for lots that are an acre or more, because that's the minimum lot area. What we're dealing with here is a lot that is half the required size, so the imposition of the larger setbacks on a small lot such as this is truly a hardship. As we've been proceeding forward with the design of this site, we looked at a lot of different alternatives, particularly when it came to layout for the public benefit portion of this project, which is the creation of public parking to benefit the rail trail expansion. We worked with the town planning staff, as well as the, the design consultants for the project, and what we've come up with is a proposal that you see here, where all of our required parking, and we do have all of the required parking under the zoning bylaw on our own site, and then we're proposing to add twelve parking spaces and construct those parking spaces for the public benefit on the town land that abuts this site, and provide the needed easement to the town to access those parking spaces. At this point, I think I will turn it over to Bob Griffin, who can walk you through the plan in, in greater detail, and then we'll have John Seeger, the architect, present the architectural plans, and then I'll do a, a brief summary for you, thank you.
Thanks. Actually, Mr. Griffin, before we go, and maybe Attorney McCann, this is always, as long as I've sat on this board, this confusion's always existed with me, is this address Old Maple Street, or is this Maple Street?
Well, Mr. Bradstreet would like to give you an answer to that. According to the tax assessor's records, this is Maple Street, the tax assessor does not say Old Maple Street, however, those of us who have lived in town for a while see this as Old Maple Street, and it's referred to in town as Old Maple Street?
As Maple Street, and tax records show it as Maple Street.
Correct.
That's all I wanted to know, thank you. Sorry, I interrupted.
Thank you, and good evening. Certainly the shape of this lot is a considerable challenge to do really anything with, but I wanted to point out that, and it may not be so obvious, but if we had zoomed out, or we were back at our aerial, you would notice that, you know, we've got a signalized intersection, a good distance from our site driveway, so here's our driveway coming in off of Old Maple Street, we're actually a hundred and seventy-five feet from Kirkbride Drive at that signalized intersection, so while people will be driving at a pretty good clip up and down Route sixty-two, we have frequent stops in traffic, so, and we really have relatively, relatively light traffic as well on Old Maple Street, so our driveway, I think, is really in a very good condition, we also have good visibility, you know, we've got about five hundred feet to where the ramp goes up to Route one, we've got, again, a hundred and seventy-five feet to Kirkbride, so there's plenty of sight distance on Old Maple Street for this particular driveway. It also, so, you know, whether you're accessing the residential building, or you're accessing the rail trail, it'll be a safe place to come and go from. Old Maple Street is relatively level across here, you can see there's not too many contour lines, we're about elevation one hundred here, I'm sorry, one oh four here, and one hundred at this end, the site has a gradual change in topography, so we're up here at about, again, one oh three, I think, at this intersection, and at this corner of the property, we're down at ninety, so that fourteen-foot approximate grade change is made up by dropping the driveway as we come down, and all of this parking that's underneath the building is, of course, you know, in the basement essentially, and so that, you know, ten-foot grade change gets made up in the building itself, and so we look at, when you look at the front of the building here, it'll look very normal, it doesn't look like, you know, things have fallen off, we have some small retaining walls here, these are five or six-foot retaining walls here and here, to help accommodate that grade change, and make it a very smooth and gradual flow into the basement area from our parking area. You can see that our parking area sort of stepped a little bit, again, because of those, the narrowing of the lot as you get towards Route sixty-two, but this also provides good areas for snow storage, we've got a good, nice area here for snow storage, nice area in front for snow storage, even from the town rail trail parking, we've got good perimeter areas on, on each side to pile snow, so there's no real danger of, you know, blocking views of intersections or anything like that with our layout the way we have it. I also want to point out that there's, you know, Old Maple Street has a fifty-eight-foot wide layout, so that's a relatively large layout, we have twenty-six feet of pavement, and so when you look at this, this five-foot sidewalk that we're gonna construct out front here, along our property line, we still have a twelve-foot wide green belt here, so this, even though we're, you know, we're less than perhaps required by the zoning district for our front yard setback, we're improving about, as compared to existing conditions, and we also have this relatively wide tree belt, so you actually end up about twenty-four feet from the front line of the building to the pavement on Old Maple Street, so it's not gonna look like it's, it's very close to the Maple Street, and it's also pretty consistent with the way wags has been developed, if we, at some point, get to go back and look at that aerial. We've got a pedestrian access coming off of the basement, coming up here to the sidewalk that'll be constructed along, basically, the frontage from the driveway all the way down here to the wags, doggy daycare facility. It's somewhat early in the process, so we really don't have a beautiful landscaping plan to show you, but I can think it's obvious that we have large, you know, areas out in front of the building, we can do nice landscaping all up and down Old Maple Street, we can do nice landscaping in between the town parking and our parking here, and we can also do some landscaping here at the, as we get closer to the intersection here. We've also got some drainage to figure out, but because the land sort of slopes away from Old Maple Street, we know that, you know, we've got room underneath our parking lot here, we've got room behind the town parking here as well, to accommodate some infiltration structures and get some water into the ground, there's no wetlands here, there's no endangered species, there's nothing, from that point of view, that's gonna be a particularly difficult challenge to solve. I think that sort of summarizes what I wanted to tell you about the site, and John Seeger's gonna be next, he'll talk about the height of the building, and it has some nice elevations to show you, so thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi, everyone.
Your name for the record?
John Seeger, Seeger Architects in Salem, Massachusetts. If you don't mind, you can go back to the site plan for a minute, it'd just be great to start there. Yeah, I think just Bob covered a lot, I have to speak into the microphone, I'm-
Yes. It can come off there if you want to take it off.
Uh, this'll work, but I think, yeah, I like the way Bob sighted the building to the east part of the site, to allow the curb cut farther away and the entry into the building here, which, as he mentioned, slopes down to the, to the garage level, about eight feet below grade, but we did front the building with the main entrance right on Maple Street, and we tried to keep sort of a rhythm or a datum for the edge of building with some bay windows and the center entrance to the building.
Excuse me, I hate to interrupt, but some people can't hear you, if you could speak up?
Sure.
Thank you.
Just lift it up higher. As Bob mentioned, this is the, the egress from the, not just the basement or the garage, but also for the floors above, stairs going up to the sidewalk, and I just wanted to point out that the, the main entrance is basically to the core of the building, where the elevator and a stair can accommodate ADA and accessibility from the, from the garage all the way up to the third level. I think you can go to the next slide, which is, are the floor plans. If you scroll down a little bit, on the same sheet, I'm sorry, on the same sheet, yeah, that one, so this is basically the, the park and garage layout with the entrance in here, the parking, exterior parking is to the left of it, and just identify the, the center core with the elevator and stair, and the egress stair, and then a typical floor plan, well, this is for the first and second level, but we have access from the, from the front at grade, we did, we did bring down the entry to grade level, even though the first floor is up about four feet, and this allows to eliminate a handicap ramp on the exterior, so there's a half floor here, which, if you go in the elevator, you can go down half a floor to the, to the garage, or you can go up to the first floor level, and it's a typical double-loaded corridor with five two-bedroom units on both the first and the second floor. And then the, the next slide? So, the third floor plan is a little unique in the sense that these are where mostly the one-bedrooms are primarily located, and we actually are trying to slip the, the third floor underneath the roof to reduce the massing of the building a little bit, that's why you see these corners are where basically the roof structure is gonna exist, but again, we were just looking at not making a, a big three, you know, three-and-a-half-story building, but trying to soften it a little bit with the roof. And then the next slide, the elevations? This west elevation, you can zoom out a little bit, that's fine. So this would face the parking lot, and you can see what Bob was talking about, there's quite a big bit of grade change that we have a retaining wall, but it allows the parking garage to be sort of sub-level or underneath the building, not being part of the street level, and then on the backside, it still slopes down farther, but this would be the main entrance for the, the garage, and we did start breaking up the massing of the little building, of the building by, by bringing a part of the building forward and introducing balconies, and you can see, we're starting to introduce some, some gables as well, and can you scroll down a little bit to the next elevation? And you can zoom out a little bit? Or a lot? Yep, that's fine. So, this is actually the south elevation, I apologize, this faces Maple Street, we just, the Norman legislature, we ended up flipping it for a second, but this is, basically fronts Maple Street, and we did create a little more of a traditional look for the building, trying to introduce some of the balconies or the porches in the front, the main entrance is in the center at grade level, we also introduced some metal, standing seam metal roofs, as well as these bay windows with balconies that project out forward, and then beyond is the massing of the building. I think, like, I was trying to work a little more with a traditional sense, more of the, the old vernacular that was there, even the existing building is, is a little more of a farm-style, a traditional home, as opposed to doing panel buildings, you see these modern panel buildings, like the office building down the street, we're just trying to soften up the massing of the building by stepping it back, and, and using some more classical elements, like whether it's the gable pediments, or, or just introducing more traditional materials, we're looking at two types of clad boards, the traditional four-inch exposure clad boards, and then for the, the bay windows or the bay towers, those would be more of a seven-inch, either flatboard or almost like a Dutch lap, and then we do have the metal standing seam roofs, as well as, the asphalt shingle roof is more in the background of the building. But I think, like Bob said, too, we, we started working on landscaping, it's not right on the street, it is set back about twenty feet, but basically, it's on the same line as the doggy daycare, that edge of the building. You can go to the, the next slide? So the east elevation faces doggy daycare, again, we pushed out the stair tower, we tried to wrap, add more clad board to the concrete foundation, there is substantial foundation on this side, just because of the way the whole site, site slopes, but essentially, this is where, the dash line is where the parking garage is here, but on the street level, the building is only four feet above grade for the first floor. And then the back of the building, that lower elevation, thanks, again, we're just introducing some balconies, and this facade is, looks a lot taller, obviously, because the grade steps back, but this faces the highway and the new trails program, which I think there'd be a lot of good views from these windows and the balconies, but again, we're, we're still working on the dormers and, and the roofs as far as breaking up the building a little bit. I think that pretty much covers it, if you guys have any questions, or if Nancy wants to add anything?
Thank you.
You bet.
A lot of work has gone into, into these plans and coming up with a design that really works with a triangular-shaped lot, as well as, as really adds something to the neighborhood. We are seeking a finding, and these are certainly very attractive, building has been designed, we think this is an appropriate use for the area, given that it is residential now, and given its close proximity to the commuting paths and, and services, and we certainly do not think that what's proposed is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what is existing now, which is the nonconforming multifamily. We will be complying with the affordable housing component under the Danvers zoning bylaw, which will require one affordable housing unit plus a contribution to the affordable housing trust, so we will be complying with that. We did provide the twelve parking spaces for the public benefit, those are- Those are 12 parking spaces that will be constructed as part of this project by the developer. And an easement over this site and over the curb cut that we're proposing for this development will be given to the inhabitants of the town of Danvers for access to those proposed parking spaces. And the design of the parking spaces are shown in concept on your plans, but that will all be designed further as we get to site plan approval, because of course, this project will need site plan approval from the planning board should you approve it. And that's where landscaping, lighting, and all of those elements will come into play. We did meet with the Rail Trail Committee on September 21st, and we received a favorable letter of support, which you should have in your packages, from the Rail Trail Committee. I have indicated in my application the additional criteria for the findings that under Section 30.4 of the zoning bylaw, municipal water and sewer systems will not become overloaded by this proposed use. The public streets will not become overloaded by the proposed use. And Bob went into some detail about the appropriateness of the proposed curb cut. The value of other land and buildings will not be appreciated by the proposed use. The specific site is appropriate, and the structures are appropriately located on the site. The use developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood, certainly. This is, while there are multifamily uses in this area and certainly a very large residential complex at the old Danvers State Hospital site, there are commercial uses that will benefit and be really compatible with this proposed use. And we think that the proposed structure will be and the proposed use will be in harmony with the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw by providing some additional housing, as well as an additional affordable housing unit to be added to the SHI. Again, we do have to go through site plan approval should this project be approved at this level. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm going to have our clerk read in the letter from the Rail Trail.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. "Thank you for giving us a chance to review and discuss plans for public parking as part of the development at 469 to 471 Maple Street. Assuming various town approvals are all secured, the Rail Trail Advisory Committee supports adding about 10 parking spots to the constructed by the developer adjacent to the future rail trail. We understand that no costs will be borne by the RTAC to develop and maintain the parking area. Parking in this area dedicated to trail users will make the trail more accessible. Thank you. Sincerely, Paul McNulty of the Danvers Rail Trail Advisory Committee."
Thank you, Ken. I have a lot of questions, but I'm going to see what my fellow board was asked prior to mine. So I'm going to start down there with you, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney McCann, you know that when we cite a residential building in a non-residential area, I always have issues with the number of units versus the square footage. And, you know, if this was a residential res-two area or whatever, you'd be 5,000 feet per unit. And I believe you said the area was 23,000 square feet?
Yes, it's about 1,570 square feet a unit.
Yeah, so I guess it's more of a comment than a question that, you know, well, I guess I have no questions.
No questions. Very good. Ken?
I just have one question, kind of an odd one. What's the height of the building from the top of the parking garage below? Since that is below grade, the height from the top of that parking garage to the roof, do we know that? Because that kind of gives like the overall height, really, since that parking garage is below grade.
Right, that would be, I assume, 55 feet where we marked loud billing height. And we're at 46.5 from the mean rafter. Basically, that's what we used with your...
Sorry, did you say 45?
Forty-six.
Forty-six feet, five...
That's from grade to the peak?
That's from the average mean grade to the average mean rafter.
Okay, thank you, that's all I had.
Halfway up. Nothing else?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Ken J.
So are there going to be mechanicals on the roof? Or where do you put the units, the AC compressing units and all that?
It's a little, it's a little early on with the design, but basically, we're looking at doing, there is going to be a few condensers on the back of the building. I'm sorry, am I speaking into this again? We're basically looking at electric heat with heat pumps or split systems. So there will not be any furnaces. There will be furnaces in the units, individual. So each unit's going to have its own heating and cooling. But we will have to put condensers probably on the back part of the site, which we'll review with site plan review and with our civil engineer to find the best location and screen them. But as far as, yeah, we only have a sprinkler room and a mechanical room in the building. There's nothing on the exterior.
I think if I heard you right, you're saying nothing on the roof at this point?
Nothing on the roof, sorry, yes, to answer the question.
Okay. Where's the dumpster going to go?
Well, we actually have, as far as I understand, the, our client is going to have private trash collection. And we have that inside the building as well.
Okay, so the access will be in the rear of the building, the all the...
In the trash room, right, right at the main entrance. There's trash and recycling at the front of the building, down at the garage entrance.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Irene?
Actually, I have a question for Attorney McCann. If this project does pass with the affordability, the affordable unit, would you take the condition that priority be given to Danvers residents?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
That's it?
Yes, that is it for now.
For now. Attorney McCann, so one of the things I've always found, especially with a lot of our public access points, not just in Danvers, but just in general, it's never really good signage. It doesn't ever really lend itself to the public, hey, you can go in here and park. Would you take a condition to add a sign, and not a peanut-sized one, but one that, you know, tells our residents and visitors that, hey, there's a, you know, there's a rail trail parking lot here. And I, I don't know if actually, quite honestly, if that exists anywhere else on our rail trails, but I think this might be a way to trail blaze, if you will. And I don't know if that adds a complication to add signage where this isn't a commercial site. I know that directional signage is allowed, but I'm looking for something that's maybe not even maintained by you. Maybe it's a town sign, I don't know. I guess I don't know if I'm opening a can of worms here, but...
As I was saying, you could put a condition that they would work with the planning division for any necessary signage. We're going, we're potentially going through a signage program anyway, so...
Yes, I think it's actually quite reasonable here because...
Well, because it does kind of look hidden away, right?
Exactly. So yes, absolutely.
Okay. And are these going to be condos or rentals?
I don't know that we've determined that yet. That's somewhat market-driven.
Okay. Does the cutout for this driveway already exist? And does that require state approval?
No, it doesn't exist. That would be noted as state approval. It does not exist because that's located on what is that even smaller triangle that's vacant. So it will be a new curb cut. It will take town approval, but not state approval.
Okay. And there's quite a few trees on this lot right now. I did hear Mr. Griffin say no endangered species or anything of that nature. But, I mean, are we talking about this lot being like totally cleared? Are we trying to save some of the trees? What's the plan on the trees, I guess?
Certainly in the area of the pavement in the building, you know, the trees are going to be removed. But I think if you looked at the aerial, you'd see there's a fair amount of vegetation on the town of Danvers property. Now, certainly, some of that will get lost with the rail trail construction. But if we can get back to that aerial, I think you'll also see that, you know, this is not going, there's still going to be trees remaining even after the rail trail, after the parking and after this project are constructed. In regards to the question about the sign, it also occurs to me that you'll see this parking area coming along Route 62. And perhaps a sign on that side would be instructive to people that might be looking for this parking area.
Okay.
Sure, there you can see, you know, north of the 471-469 property, there's still a lot of vegetation in that area, even though there's power lines. You can see all the trees showing up on the aerial. And, you know, a lot of that's going to be certainly remaining. As we get towards the pointy end of our site, we're really not building in the pointy end of our site. So the trees in that area can be saved as well.
Okay. And why don't you stay up there? Because I want to talk sidewalks. What exists currently? I know this Wags building next door was recently redone. I believe, you know, as someone who comes off that off-ramp quite a bit off of Route 1 and curls around subpoenos, I guess I can't remember. Does there a sidewalk exist currently that goes in front of Wags? And just talk to me about how this is going to tie into what I heard you say were going to be an additional sidewalk. And is it going to be one of these sidewalks that just randomly ends?
I mean, you know, there's certainly no sidewalk shown, you know, southeast of Wags here. So this is no sidewalk in this area, and the site's been built out. But we are proposing to connect basically from our property line, which is the edge of the pavement here at the Wags, all along the heavy yellow line to our driveway location, which is approximately here. And, you know, so you would be able to certainly, you know, walk from our parking spaces up the sidewalk to the front door of the building. But, you know, and who knows where the rail trail pedestrian sort of setups are going to be? I'm sure there's going to be a good connection between the rail trail and the parking spaces. You'd be able to come off of those parking spaces, get to our sidewalk on Old Maple Street. But from there, I'm not exactly sure where the pedestrian pass would go. Certainly, you'd be able to cross the road, I suppose, to get to Leahy. But outside of that, I really don't know what the pedestrian...
Well, you can see, I guess, again, more of a comment. But, I mean, I see this site as kind of landlocked and pedestrian access, although maybe good within the site. I'm just, you know, you're talking about 15 units here. I just don't understand how anybody would even cross, quite frankly, Maple Street if they were to want to walk over to Leahy or these other places that are close by. There is no public crosswalk that I can see. And is that something that... I mean, I understand you guys may not want to take on the expense, but if we're going to populate an area that's right off the highway in a busy area, it just seems like it lends itself to maybe a town crosswalk or something of that nature. And has that discussion come up on your side, I should say?
I don't think...
Your team?
We haven't given a lot of thought to the pedestrian movement, you know, outside of the property yet. I think that that's the type of subject that we'll come up with the planning board as we go through site plan review, and we'll look at the traffic generation and, you know, the pedestrian, as well as the bike opportunities.
Okay, you led right into my next one. We have an idea on trip generation.
As far as the number of trips per day and all that?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. I could give you some estimates just based on typical condominium or apartment uses, but I think I, you know, I would be talking from memory, and so I'd rather not be specific at this point in time. But 15 units is not a huge number of units. And certainly, in comparison to the size of Route 62 and the traffic routes that are available near the site, I have a hard time believing that this would ever have a significant impact on traffic movement.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My next question, Attorney McCann, is more for the architect. Quite honestly, and please don't take this the wrong way, but I look at the building as it looks a little too hard to me, a little too much like maybe an office building. I know you talked about materials. Is there anything we can do or have you guys discussed how to perhaps soften the look or give it some different types of windows? Or just maybe not so square-ish, I guess?
Yeah, I think, as I mentioned earlier, with the massing, we did try to break it up a little bit at the ends. But in reality, it is a good-sized building. So introducing the bays in the front, I tried to break up sort of the wall massing. And again, dropping the roof down, trying not to make it, you know, so heavy on the street.
What about like something like, I know there's an official name for them, you know, arched-type windows or something like you'd see like at the old Danvers Savings Bank. I think, you know, we see a lot of this around town. It just seems like it would be a better fit. What's the official name of those windows?
They're either palladium arches...
Palladium, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, but windows. But really, I think we could introduce more of a double-hung window with a six-over-six or something like that. Because it's, I don't have any real reference for the arched windows. There's, but I think what could help is if, we did have sort of a little modern window with a transom above it, because we do have a little bit higher floor-to-floor ceilings. See, we have sort of the transom.
I mean, I'm not here to design it, and I'm certainly not trying to beat up your design. But that, my first impression is it's just, it's got a kind of a, not a residential look to it. And I, I think with this large project that's going on in downtown Danvers, I would have said the same thing about that building, but it didn't come before us, so... You know, this one is before us, and I just, you know, again, my question is just, what other directions can you go without breaking the bank here to make it a little bit more residential-looking?
Well, I think, you know, we did try to introduce the porches, at least to give it a little more residential feel. I think the one of the issues we have is the first floor elevation is up four-and-a-half, five feet. So that is sort of like a plinth that we're dealing with that sets the building up a little higher. I think working, we have looked at working with the actual pediments. Those are basically hip roofs. We looked at doing gable roofs. I think, you know, I think we could widen the bays a little bit too, scale-wise. And again, double-hung windows. But I think we're kind of limited to the footprint to try and get the square footage in. Yeah, I'm even looking at, on the third floor, instead of having the banding right on the third floor, if we introduce a couple of low windows there. But it's, there was kind of a trick to drop the roof down and not have a whole band of windows on the third floor. But we have worked with a couple of different options. And I think the few that I mentioned might help soften up a little bit to give that a little more residential feel. Because I, I do feel that what I had a challenge is it is a larger building than just residential. So as I'm showing here, trying to break up the bays and then creating a porch, I think it helps soften a little bit.
The elevations are part of site plan approval also. So what we could do, if you, if you'd like, is to accept a condition that we would look at softening some of the elements to this so that when it gets to site plan approval and we're submitting elevation drawings that have colors and materials and that sort of thing, we can incorporate some of your thoughts and comments into those elevation drawings, which would then be a part of site plan approval is looking at the elevations and looking at materials and window designs and things like that. We could certain, we would certainly take a condition.
Okay. I mean, I'm just trying to, you know, you've got Danvers, the old Danvers State Hospital, which obviously has some very unique... State Hospital, which obviously has some very unique look to it. Obviously, nothing like that in the entire area. But then, you know, if you look at some other projects that were done, they are definitely more of a square box with, you know, not very appealing to the eye, I guess. So, yes, that would be okay. And I guess the last question, I just want to clarify with you, Attorney McCann. So if I heard you correctly, so this really doesn't meet any setbacks at all on all, both the front, side, rear?
It meets the left-side setback.
Okay, so one of them.
Well, that's, that is very true. It's really hard...
I may be generalizing here, but I just...
No, but that's, that's true. We're decreasing the nonconformity as to the front setback quite significantly.
I got that. You're pushing it off the street.
And then we have the side setback, which does not meet 25 feet, it's 15 feet. And then the rear setback is about seven feet and change from...
And is that because of the easement?
No, that's in, that is because of the shape of this lot.
That's the shape of the lot, okay.
And I do have a copy of, if you're interested in seeing it, I have a, I marked up myself a copy of the A&R Plan where this was combined. And when you take 25 feet off of the setbacks, off of the lot lines of this triangle, you are left with next to nothing on this site. And I think, I'm going to show you, since I went to the trouble of marking it up.
This requires a glances change.
And this really demonstrates the hardship argument here. So this is the A&R Plan. This is the lot line, right? Providing both of those lots. If I take, sorry, it's here. If I take 25 feet off of here, I'm left, it comes out to here. So I am left with this triangle that's about like this, right here. It's a really weird, weird kind of thing that you could do nothing on this lot. You could do nothing on this lot that would comply with the highway corridor. You really couldn't. You economically, or even physically, couldn't design a building that's going to meet that and that could be usable for permitted use. So it's tough. It's a lot that's half the size, but it's also got imposed upon it 25-foot setbacks all the way around. So we have designed something that's reasonable, that will work with this, with this site. We've got all of the required parking, half of which is below the building, which is usually seen as, and I suspect you see it and the planning board will see it, as a benefit to have half of the parking. Certainly a benefit for the residents to be under the building. So we do meet the parking requirement. We don't have to ask for any waivers of that from the planning board. And that means we're providing even two parking spaces for the one-bedroom units, because that's what the bylaw requires. And so we do, we are really in, this is a difficult site. It's difficult, but we think that this residential use is appropriate for this area. It's not a used variance. This is an expansion of the existing nonconforming residential use. It's been a residential site since 1900.
Okay. I think you answered all mine. And I just want to be clear, the conditions you accepted were, and I'm paraphrasing here, to soften the look of this thing, if it does pass and goes in front of the planning board, signage? And I think there might have been one more?
Yes. Priority for Danvers residents on the affordable...
Danvers residents, thank you. Okay. Board members, I've taken plenty of time here. Any additional questions from any of you?
No.
I'll go out to the public. We're here on what is known as, if you're old, it's Old Maple Street. Otherwise, it's Maple Street and 469 and 471 Maple Streets. Anybody here would like to be heard or make comments?
Sorry, there is one person online. It's listed as John Rigucci, but it's Joanne, or sorry, Joan, Joan Rigucci. Let me just unmute.
Go ahead.
Hold on a sec.
Hopefully our technology will come through.
You should be able to unmute now, Joan.
Yep. Can you hear me? It's Joanne?
Yes, Joanne, go right ahead.
Great. Joanne Rigucci, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3, excuse me, Precinct 2. I just have a couple of questions, and I'm hoping, as I ask them, they can be answered. Then it might, I might need a follow-up question on that, if, depending on the answer. Can you bring up the aerial view again of the proposed area of the building?
Joanne, I'm sure you're speaking loudly, but if you could try maybe a little more, we're having a hard time hearing you.
All right, I'll unmute. Okay, thank you for bringing up the aerial view. Is that better? Can you hear me better?
A little bit, yes.
A little bit, okay. So if I'm in the right area, and if I'm on the right street, where is the Danvers Fire Station in relation to this proposed building site?
Yeah, go ahead, you can respond.
So here's the iron ramp here.
Pop into the mic if you can.
And so it would be a little bit more zoomed out, but sort of right around the corner from this site.
Right. It's on the same street. Yes, okay. Good, okay, all right, good. All right, thank you. That actually gives me a better picture of the area, and I, all right, I know exactly what we're talking about, and I was correct. So my first question is, is that I see with a lot of the development around town, for example, not for you guys to have to take the hit for this, but the apartment building that's going up on the corner of Holton Street, I had to go down that street the other day in my car, and I'm glad my car is still in one piece. The road is pretty torn up, and this is a very, Old Maple Street is a very heavily-traveled route. And what guarantees are there from the developer that this road, even during construction, can be kept in good condition for commuters to pass, and also for the fire station, for our, you know, truck to be able to get up and down without any damage, without delaying any response to calls?
Yeah, Bob, into the mic if you could, Bob.
So one of the nice things, I think, about our site layout is that we have this wide strip of grass between our property line and Old Maple Street. We have got, I think that's, it was 12 feet plus another five feet, so about 17 feet there. And our building is set back from there with plenty of staging room to the left-hand, the pointy end of the site, with the construction happening on the fat end of the site. So there's really a lot of room off of Old Maple Street for us to put materials and to do our construction work. I think you can also see in the aerial that Wags was recently rebuilt. And so it is possible to do redevelopment work on Old Maple Street without significantly affecting traffic along Old Maple Street. There may be times when, because of utility work, the need to get into the street, we may have to do a water connection or something like that. But that would all be done in coordination with the police department and with the fire department of Danvers, so everyone knows what we're doing when we're doing it.
Okay, thank you. So sort of the core of my question is, is the condition of the street being, you know, I went down Holton Street, I think it was on a Saturday, so it was a non-workday. And, you know, it was like, it was like going down a mogul hill. I want to make sure that we have, you know, assurances from this developer and, you know, any developer going forward in the town, that if these streets are dug up, they can't be left in, you know, poor condition. And I think that is sort of my concern. And, you know, I hate to have, you guys have to own this, but I know you're going to keep a lot of the staging on the, in the wider part of the lot, but when you're digging up to get into town utilities for the water pipes and for whatever else, this is what I see impacting the streets. It's dug up, it's dug up for a while. So I really have an issue with that, because I don't, I don't think it's being enforced by the town.
All right, well, Joan, I'm going to stop you there. This, you know, what you're bringing up are other projects, other parts of town. They really have no bearing on this. So I would just ask that the questions be directed about this application.
Okay, so it's an example of what's happening. So my concern for this application, it's a heavily, it's a heavily traveled road, and it being dug up for this development, it's a big concern. The other concern is the parking spaces actually for the rail trail. What are those spaces going to be used for if it's not being used for the rail trail?
Well, let, go ahead, Attorney McCann, you want to respond to that?
Yeah, the easement that will be granted is for parking for the rail trail and for access to the parking spaces for those using the rail trail.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, and those spaces are on town property. So the town will be enforcing that parking is for use for the rail trail only. And I'll just jump back, because I know it's a concern of yours. This is a very different project than the project that you're referring to downtown. What has happened in the project downtown, drainage pipes, water pipes, utility pipes for the town that are located within the street were required to be replaced by that developer. This is a very different project. This is not going to have that sort of infrastructure change within the layout of the street. So it is not any, this project is not similar to the one downtown, and I do know what you're referring to. But with regard to the parking spaces, they will be for those who are accessing the rail trail.
Okay. And you mentioned there's going to be two parking spaces per unit, even the one-bedroom, correct?
That's correct. That's what the bylaw requires.
Okay. Okay, so 30 parking spaces in total?
Correct.
For the building. Okay. Okay, I have no further questions.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard on this project?
Good evening. David Craig, 370 Maple Street or Old Maple Street, depending on how you draw them out.
How you look at it, yeah.
Actually, I was looking at this, and of course, you refer to, you look at an online forum, and there's all kinds of, you know, 17 opinions from three or four people. But fundamentally, I think this is actually a good use of this piece of property. Right now, it consists of a vacant lot and a rundown three-family home. The formerly rundown property next to it is, has been fixed up very nicely to be the dogged daycare. It's not, it's not a neighborhood that's going to have a great deal of impact. Its location is actually very appropriate for a larger residential development like this, where it is literally seconds from Route 1 South, without impacting any other town traffic. And all the other major routes have very, would have very, very little impact on traffic as well. And I think as far as the character of the neighborhood, although I agree that, you know, a little bit of softening to make it look a little more residential would be nice. You're looking at the Leahy Building behind it. You're looking at the state police barracks across the street, which couldn't look any more industrial if it tried, and such as that. It's not, it's not a residential neighborhood of, you know, older homes like a lot of areas in Danvers, so.
So I take it you're in support?
I am, I am in support of this development, yes.
Thank you. Here, yeah.
Brian, is that caller still online? I guess if you could just ask her, let me hold you up one second. I just, I wanted to ask her if she's in support of the project or Maybe you can even chat with her.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Jason Maury. Born and raised here in town, been here 55 years. Own a couple pieces of property in town, and...
Jason, if we could just get an address?
I have property on 141 Pine Street, and I have a property that my residence is at 24 Brookwood Lane. And I actually did the site work for the Wags project that was next door, and I'm here just to support the project. I think this is an appropriate use for the building, or for the land, rather. And, you know, given its current state, when we were working next door, you know, that, the current structure is in really, really bad shape. So I think for someone to outfit that and make that right would be near impossible. So, you know, I'm just, I'm just here to support the project. I know there's a lot going on in town, the places, a lot of roads are torn up, and I can, I guess, sympathize with the last person online with her comments in regards to what's going on on Hobart Street. But I don't see near the impact on a project like this to move forward. So just here in support of it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard on this project?
The caller is still typing. I just asked if she was for or against the project, and...
Okay. Well, with that said, and if she does get back, I'll let you jump in. But at this point, I'll close the public portion of comments here. And before we deliberate, does anyone have any additional questions from the board?
Well, I have one.
Yeah?
Would you be open to having two affordable housing units?
I don't know about that. I'd have to speak to my client about that. The one-and-a-half, the calculation is one-and-a-half units, so that means, under the bylaw, the way it's drafted, is one unit plus a substantial financial donation.
Okay. You want to confer?
Sure. If I drop this pointer.
Any, I think, Brian?
It says, "I'm in support if Hogan across the street, and if the street condition can be maintained, one affordable unit plus one unit for a veteran." That's not something that this board can control, but certainly an affordable unit with a preference for a Danvers resident, that's the most amount that we can control. But it says, "I'm in support if Hogan across the street, and if the street condition can be maintained."
Well, we can't put a condition on somebody that's not in front of us, so. But I think they already, if I heard it correctly, Corinne had asked for a condition that the one affordable unit be a preference to a Danvers resident, and they agreed to that already, so.
Gotcha. She said if Hogan was in favor, who is? So it's a yes in support.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you at home.
Any, well, we're waiting, any additional questions? Jeff, Ken, Ken, Corinne, we're good?
No.
The thoughts are, is the, is the one unit and the contribution is really what the project is based on, and that's the requirement under the bylaw?
Okay. All right, we're going to go ahead and deliberate. If you're ready for us.
Are you polling the board?
I just have one question now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So based on our bylaw, which type of apartment or unit would it be? Would it be a two-bedroom or a one-bedroom?
Because there are 11 two-bedrooms and four one-bedrooms, I believe it would be a two-bedroom.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
EOHLC would, the new name for the Department of Community and Housing and Development, they would, they would require that to be a two-bedroom because of the breakdown. They wouldn't have, they wouldn't have a choice. They would just tell them that that's going to be the two-bedroom.
Sorry. Sorry. Eh, so if I heard you correctly Attorney McCann, that the, the bylaws requiring a two-bedroom affordable unit and a, basically a cash donation to our Affordable Housing Trust.
That's correct.
In the amount of what would be half of a full unit, I think.
It, it would be a calculation that the town planning staff typically comes up with for us.
Okay. Um, and you still want more info from the board or are we good?
Uh, you typically poll the members of the board before you.
I'll let each person weigh in on, on, in their deliberation. How about that?
And you usually do that before you close, you're not closing the public hearing, so you allow me to.
Yes, banter is, banter is alive and well.
Thank you so much.
Uh, well, um, Jeff, your thoughts on the affordable piece of it?
Uh, thank you, Mr., are we deliberating on the whole thing?
Well, I think, yeah, yeah, we can.
Um, yeah, I, I don't um, I don't care about the fact that the building doesn't meet setbacks, it's an impossible lot to pull twenty-five feet back from every dimension and end up with a postage stamp. Um, I am opposed to fifteen units on twenty-three thousand square feet, I just think that's too dense and I think the building is too big, despite the fact there are other big buildings in the area, um, I just think that's too many units on too little land, so I'm a no.
Thank you Jeff, and Ken?
Thank you. Um, you know, when I see these projects, I typically look at it and say, geez, I don't really like where it is, uh, uh, it doesn't work for me. This completely works for me. I love this spot for this building. Perfect. Um, I like how many units there are, I love the parking spaces for the rail trail, I'm a definite yes.
Thank you Ken. Ken Jay?
I'm also a yes, I, I think it's an appropriate spot for it, I think it's great access to uh, many different, you know, uh, thoroughways and roads and, and whatnot, and it's right close to Wags too, so people can actually walk and have their dogs uh, go right in there. I, I like it.
Thank you Ken, uh, Corinne?
Um, I, I agree with Jeff, I, I think, I am in favor of this project, I just think um, for the density, I think it's too big, so if it's scaled it back a little bit, um, I would be a yes, but it's too big right now.
Thank you Corinne. Um, Attorney McCann, my feeling is uh, especially with the conditions you've chosen to accept, although I still find the softening with planning a little gray for me, a little fuzzy because I.
It's very gray.
I, I, I don't know what that means. Um, you guys throw a certain color on it and planning's happy. Uh, we're not the planning board, I get it, but, well, hold on, um, I, I guess I just would want something a little more concrete on the softening side of it, that we will, not, we'll try, but we will do something uh, to make it look more residential. With that said, I would vote in favor of it, um, however, you don't have the votes currently, so uh, what would you like to do? I think if I'm hearing Jeff and Corinne properly, it's a little too big for them.
Um, can I have a moment?
You can. And actually, uh, we're gonna take a five-minute recess.
Good.
How about that?
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, all right, we're gonna go ahead and deliberate if you uh, ready for us.
Are you polling the board?
I, I just have one question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just in now.
Oh, no, it's, okay.
Um, so, based on, on our bylaw, which, which type of apartment or, or unit would it be? Would it be a two-bedroom or a one-bedroom?
Because there are eleven two-bedrooms and four one-bedrooms, I believe it would be a two-bedroom.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Um, EOHLC would, um, the, oh, the, the new name for the Department of Community and uh, Housing and Development, they would, they would require that to be a two-bedroom because of the breakdown.
Okay.
They wouldn't have a, they wouldn't have a choice, they would just tell them that that's going to be the two-bedroom.
All right, so if I heard you correctly Attorney McCann, that the, the bylaws requiring a two-bedroom affordable unit and a, basically a cash donation to our Affordable Housing Trust.
That's correct.
In the amount of what would be half of a full unit, I think.
It, it would be a calculation that the town planning staff typically comes up with for us.
Okay. Um, and you still want more info from the board or are we good?
Uh, you typically poll the members of the board before you.
I'll let each person weigh in on, on, in their deliberation. How about that?
And you usually do that before you close, you're not closing the public hearing, so you allow me to.
Yes, banter is, banter is alive and well.
All right, very good. Thank you so much.
Uh, well, um, Jeff, your thoughts on the affordable piece of it?
Uh, thank you, Mr., are we deliberating on the whole thing?
Well, I think, yeah, yeah, we can.
Um, yeah, I, I don't, um, I don't care about the fact that the building doesn't meet setbacks, it's an impossible lot to pull twenty-five feet back from every dimension and end up with a postage stamp. Um, I am opposed to fifteen units on twenty-three thousand square feet, I just think that's too dense and I think the building is too big, despite the fact there are other big buildings in the area, um, I just think that's too many units on too little land, so I'm a no.
Thank you Jeff, and Ken?
Thank you. Um, you know, when I see these projects, I typically look at it and say, geez, I don't really like where it is, uh, uh, it doesn't work for me. This completely works for me. I love this spot for this building. Perfect. Um, I like how many units there are, I love the parking spaces for the rail trail, I'm a definite yes.
Thank you Ken. Ken Jay?
I'm also a yes, I, I think it's an appropriate spot for it, I think it's great access to many different, you know, uh, thoroughways and roads and, and whatnot, and it's right close to Wags too, so people can actually walk and have their dogs uh, go right in there. I, I like it.
Thank you Ken, uh, Corinne?
Um, I, I agree with Jeff, I, I think, I am in favor of this project, I just think for the density, I think it's too big, so if it's scaled it back a little bit, um, I would be a yes, but it's too big right now.
Thank you Corinne. Um, Attorney McCann, my feeling is uh, especially with the conditions you've chosen to accept, although I still find the softening with planning a little gray for me, a little fuzzy because I.
It's very gray.
I, I, I don't know what that means. Um, you guys throw a certain color on it and planning's happy. Uh, we're not the planning board, I get it, but, well, hold on, um, I, I guess I just would want something a little more concrete on the softening side of it, that we will, not, we'll try, but we will do something uh, to make it look more residential. With that said, I would vote in favor of it, um, however, you don't have the votes, you couldn't.
Um, the, the other option um, is to um, go down to thirteen units, that would be net new of ten, just ten new units on the site. Uh, remember, this is highway corridor zone, there are big buildings all around, it is not going to look out of place, um, and in that situation, we would have one two-bedroom, two-bedroom affordable unit with a Danvers preference and a donation, uh, if we go down to just ten net new, which would be thirteen units total. Um, you know, the, the building is under the height requirement of the Highway Corridor Zoning District, um, we, we're pushing it back further away from the street, we've got a commercial use next door to us, we're working with a difficult site, um, it's a good project and thirteen units, which is a net new of ten, um, is, is it, I discussed two, two options, those are the two um, options that we can do to still make this project work.
But this thirteen would not decrease the building size? I guess I would not just, how, how would thirteen work, I guess?
It really, I, I'll ask the architect, dropping two units, does it change the building size?
All right, come on up.
Yeah, it's funny John too, I had a chance to kind of sketch and address um, how to soften the building even without reducing the units, um, by bringing the roof line all the way down to the, the second floor plate, but if it was thirteen units, then that would be, there would only be three units on the third floor, which basically it would be one roof with a bunch of dormers, so yes, it would soften the structure, it would lessen the mass of the building.
Changes the roof line a little bit.
Changes the roof line a lot. Yeah, it really does, and I, I think that um, we would still keep um, five, five and then three on the um, third floor.
So, losing those two units, we're gonna, it'll bring the, the roof line will change. Good choice. We can continue. It doesn't sound like, and again, I mean, these, you know, a lot of times with projects of this type, it's, we don't bang it out in one night. I think we've spent a little bit of time on this. I think it was a good discussion here. A lot of questions answered. I think you've taken some conditions and some concessions. So, to push it out two weeks, I don't, I don't think's a big ask, but I'm not you guys.
I just think of Franklin Street.
Sorry?
I just think of the house on Franklin Street.
Yeah, 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 no, we've been burned.
We got totally snookered.
School Street.
School Street, yeah, well, Franklin School.
Is that where the Transformers go to street?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, remember that one?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was frigging huge.
I'd dial in from Maru, but I don't think that's happening.
We're going to be lucky if we can get Kareem to dial in. Now, if you don't dial in, we're, it's going to be me, Ken, and Jeff here holding down the fort.
That's what happened to Precipitation. Dan Bennett and Dan Gagnon and Louis weren't there.
They were all not there?
They were all not there. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Louis was there. It was Dan and Dan who weren't there. So, even though I was very loud, I still had, I still...
Well, loud equals you're two people.
Well, I don't know.
Right.
I would go like this, but I didn't want to speak.
They have an internet in Maru.
Yeah.
I don't know if I want to, I don't know if I want to see Ken and his, you know, his
wife Vito with the margarita in his hand.
Yeah. Espido, in Espido.
So, the issue for, should we continue, is what we have discussed here is we go down to 13 units, soften the look of the building, one affordable unit, and if we can make the building look, decrease the mass, then the board members are indicating that they would be in favor.
Yeah, it sounds like it would be a favorable decision. And although we will not have a full board that night, we will have four voting members.
I think to give our architect time, I would ask that we actually go to the meeting of the 27th, which we should have a full board then, but I think it would be a bit of a push for him to try and get it done for the 11th or whatever it is, for the first meeting. So, I would ask, with that understanding, I would ask for a continuance until the meeting of November 27.
Yes. Before, hold on, Jeff, before I grant that, Brian, how many cases are currently on for the 27th? We've already continued one.
It's not overloaded at the moment. We can take one on the 27th.
That'll be fine. Go ahead, Jeff, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue this case to our meeting of November 27.
I got a motion?
I'll second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll see you on the 27th.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Tuesday before for updated plans, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for the long delay there. I believe you're up next as well. Okay, Mr. Clerk.
Adams. Our last case is 49 Adams Street, zoned R1. Request for variance and finding under sections 9.2.9.2 and Table 2 of the Danvers zoning bylaw to allow the construction of a new duplex on site. This application is a repeat application of a variance that was submitted in 2021 and has since lapsed. No changes proposed from the original submission in 2021. Request is made by Nancy McCann, docket 23-5047.
Hello there.
Hello there.
We're buzzing right along. Are you ready to move on this one as well?
Still here, yes. Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of Jared Hazel, owner of the property located at 49 Adams Street in the root, on the residence one, a zoning district. This is a repeat application from what you heard in 2021. There have been no changes whatsoever to the application. Back in 2021, this board granted a number of variances associated with this project. That application was granted. We then went on to the planning board for site plan review as well as a special permit for this project. And all of that was granted. The proposal involves a, there is an existing duplex at 49 Adams Street. The proposal is to add a second duplex at the rear of 49 Adams Street. By adding that second duplex in the back, the project then became a multifamily under Table 2 of the zoning bylaw. So, that caused the multifamily dimensional requirements to be imposed on the whole project, on the whole site. And we requested variances not associated with the new duplex. The new duplex is 100% conforming, but because of the multifamily regulations, the existing duplex now changes from a two-family to a multifamily under the table. And so, all of the zoning relief that we requested, which was front setback, side setback, distance between buildings, all apply to the existing building. So, nothing, and nothing was changing relative to that existing building, other than the implication of adding on those new regulations, the multifamily regulations. So, the proposal is to add a duplex in the back. That's fully conforming. We requested and received variances from front, side, and distance between building for the existing duplex in the front, and there's no changes being made to that. There's no change to the streetscape. We have five times the required open space for this total development. We've got an adjacent apartment complex. This received unanimous approval back in 2021. We, after we received that approval, we went on to the planning board for the special permit for the duplex, which was unanimously granted, as well as site plan approval. The applicant went forward and got a building permit, timely, and then ran into some issues with his financing. And while he was getting his financing squared away, the variance lapsed. So, that's why we're here. The site, the special permit is still valid. The time period did not run on that. The site plan approval, we went to the planning board last week and that period was extended. But the variance has lapsed and so you need to hear that essentially anew and grant the variance anew. The finding that you granted back in 2021 is still valid. So, this is where we get into a little statutory problem because the first thing that we need to get for a development, if we need a variance, we have to get that first before we can get anything else. And that, under the state statute, has the shortest effective date. Variances are only good for a year. Special permits are good for three years. Site plan approval is good for, I believe, now three years, two to three years in Danvers. Orders of conditions are good for three years. The variance, the first thing you have to get, has the shortest timeframe. So, we sometimes run into this problem. So, because he did, again, pull his building permit timely, but then ran into some financial problems with financing the project, as that happened, the variance lapsed. So, we now have to come back to you. So, we are requesting, please, a reissuance of the frontage, front setback, and side setback and distance between building variances that were granted by this board in 2021. We would ask that you grant those again, and nothing has changed in the proposal.
Okay. And Attorney McCann, just a correction. It was not, there was one member opposed.
Oh, there was. Sorry about that. I misspoke.
But, but I guess, and I'll turn it over to the board for questions, but we've already extended this once.
Yes.
That was going to be my point of clarification, is that it was done in 2021 and then there was an extension done March of 2022, a six-month extension. So, it's been extended once. So, this actually went up in September of 2022.
So, it's been expired for over a year?
It's actually been expired for over a year. So, they actually got like a two, instead of six month, it was an 18-month extension, essentially.
So, what are you asking for? How long? Because this is...
You can, it variances a year.
Well, but what are you, what are you asking for, though? Is three months enough?
Oh, that's an interesting...
Yeah, because we've, we granted it to you. We extended it and still nothing has happened. I drive by this property often wondering what's, what's holding this up.
Yeah, well, financing was holding it up.
Clearly, we don't want to have it open-ended. It's already expired. So, I guess, what are you proposing as far as time?
That's interesting. Variances under 48, Section 10, have a one-year provision. Can you give a variance with less? And I guess the answer is, if you wanted to do that, I don't know you...
I'm honestly saying probably not.
Yeah.
Is what I'm saying. I'm thinking probably not.
This is a new variance, so what would you...
I think you either...
So, it's going to be automatic one year if we pass it?
It'd be one year. I think realistically, the board has already extended it several times. You could, you cannot put a condition on it saying that the applicant couldn't apply for another extension.
Right, I got you.
But you could probably say, hey, we've extended this several times. You don't need to, there's no way to memorialize this in the decision, but it's like, you've extended this several times. There's no guarantee you're going to really get another extension here.
Yeah.
Like, you can say that.
Right. I mean, you've extended it once and he got his building permit within that extension time, all right? Building permits are good for six months. Because of his, so he did exercise his variance partially by getting the building permit, but he did not start construction within the six-month building permit validity window because of a financing lending issue. So, the variance then lapsed in that period.
All right, I've got all that.
Okay.
When's he going to start the project? Let's just cut to the chase.
Jared is right here. He can tell you.
Hi.
They would like, Jared has been out in the hall, I believe, because he has a child with him.
And I think that'll put a lot of questions to rest.
Financing is in place now.
Hold on. Into the microphone and identify yourself, please.
Start date is very soon. I talked to my guy at the bank.
Identify yourself?
Jared Hazel.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Start date should be soon. I'm dealing with the bank right now. My contractor is also lined up.
Just give me a roundabout date.
Oh, so this goes through, next month I should be able to sign all papers.
We're talking this calendar year?
Yes.
We're going to get started on it. So, everything you feel is in place except for this variance. So, your financing's in place?
Yes.
Yeah, you'll start over again with permits, I believe, correct? Because the permits don't extend, right?
The building permits.
The building, yeah, the building permit.
All the other permits are in place.
So, everything's in place except this variance?
Yes, sir.
And you're going to start before this calendar year is out? That's what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Let me turn it over to questions. Kareem, we'll start with you.
Well, Brian, answer my questions. I was, you know, I looked at this docket, docket form, and it said that it expired October 12th of 2022. So, it did expire over a year ago and that was the extension that expired.
Correct.
So, yeah, I mean, I don't really have any other questions. I'll wait to comments, but that was my only question.
Okay, thank you. Ken?
I have no questions.
Thank you. Ken Schules?
Thank you. So, it sounds like he's still dealing with the bank. Finances in place. You're guaranteed to get your money and ready to start. That's the only question I have.
Are you answering yes?
No, he did.
Okay. In the microphone, please. The question was, your finances are in place and you're ready to start?
No more bank talks.
Yes, sir.
Just go and sign papers.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and they need this variance in order to finance you?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's all.
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
All right, and I think, I think this is clear. And again, back to Brian. So, we're reissuing, this starts the clock from the state vote if we pass it.
Correct. It would be a, because the extension passed last year, so it would be, yeah, a re...
Basically, brand-new.
A brand-new variance. That's why it's a new, I believe it's a new docket number based because of that.
Yeah, is it?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. So, since this is a new docket number, it's...
A new docket number.
Yeah.
Fresh start.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to comment on 49 Adams Street? All right, Kareem? Deliberations?
I would vote for this.
Ken?
I would vote for this, too.
And Ken?
As long as the project's going forward, I'm in favor.
I don't think we have any control of that part.
I know.
Jeff?
I'm a no. I was no last time and I'm a no still.
Yeah, Mr. Hazel, I think we, I remember this case vividly, as it was kind of unique. You have a unique property there. I was looking forward to this happening. I'm frustrated that it hasn't, but however, I'm going to give you the benefit of the doubt and I will vote in favor. So, you do have the votes. And if I could get a motion, please.
I'll read it since you're... So, am I reading this as an extension?
I'm sorry. There actually was someone online who had a public comment related to 49 Adams and I missed it. So, my fault here.
All right, we can, we can roll back.
Give me just a second.
Yeah, I don't think I can read it as...
Joanne, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Joanne Ragucci, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. My question is, you know, I'm a little uncomfortable with the developer guaranteeing, yeah, I got the financing, I got the financing. I understand he needs the variance in order for the bank to prove it. Does he have a preapproval letter from the lender stating this, that, I'm not even sure that you guys are allowed to ask for it, but does he have that?
So, that is not, thank you for that question. This is not the first time I've actually heard this question. But no, typically, that is, that is not allowed, is not really part of the special permit or the variance or the finding criteria of whether or not it's in place. So, although the board can speak of whether or not it's, they are in favor because of it, it can't really be a point of criteria for evaluating the application. And they can't, yeah.
Well, I, that question sort of came up because as the board was questioning it.
Yes.
So, that's why, you know, that kind of raised my concern about that. And, you know, we've been back and forth, you know, a few times on this project. So, I would say, you know, if the board approves it, this is the last time down the road. We shouldn't have to go down this again.
Well, I think the board's made it very clear. I, you know, I can tell you this much. We won't extend it again.
Good, good. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else, Brian?
No, that's it.
And we will edit the read a little here because we're really not doing an extension.
We're not really extending this variance. It's creating a new one.
Correct.
I'll state it differently.
I would just, yeah, vote to approve if you're going to, rather than saying vote to extend, it would just be approve.
Okay. And board members, just based on the last public comment there, is there any change in votes? No, no changes. Okay. Could I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We issue a variance under Table 2 for 42 Adams Street. We issue a variance under Table 2 for 42 Adams Street. The dimensional variance is to allow the extending duplex to have a 93-foot frontage where 125 feet is required, 18.1 feet of front setback where 40 feet is required, and 9.2 of side setback where 30 is required, and 23 feet between buildings where 40 is required. And that this condition does not affect other properties or structures in the same zoning district. A little enforcement of the zoning bylaw would involve substantial hardship to the applicant. Granting this variance will not create a substantial detriment to the public good and will not nullify or derogate from the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw.
I've got a motion. Could I get a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Good luck and I look forward to the project getting done and moving forward. And with that said, could I get a motion to close for the evening?
So moved.
And seconded.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.